All right, thanks everyone. We're going to get underway. We just want to allow plenty of time for public comment. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Dominic Pagallo. I'm the mayor, and I want to welcome you to the public comment hearing for the 40R overlay zone that's being contemplated by the city. I want to open with the city's land acknowledgement. This land is Namkeg or Fishing Place, where generations of indigenous peoples lived and passed through for centuries. From the village on the Namkeg River, now known as the North River, to Satchman Anapas Shemet's fortification, now known as Castle Hill, the people of Namkeg farmed, fished, traded, raised families, discovered and invented, created art, and above all else honored the lands upon which we stand today. We acknowledge this is indigenous land and also acknowledge the Massachusetts tribe will continue to honor and hold this land into the present. So, some quick housekeeping. This meeting is being recorded by Salem Access TV. Thank you very much for doing that, and it will be posted and available online at ImagineSalem.org, where you can also find background information and more materials about 40R zoning, smart growth districts, and so forth. The focus of this evening's meeting is on the preliminary application draft that the city is preparing for zoning, and planning department staff will be talking a little bit more about what that means in a moment. And then, I also want to express my gratitude to the members of the planning department who are here to help facilitate the public comment as it's taken up and to lead us through this presentation. So I'm going to hand it over to Elena from the planning department, who's going to talk a little bit about 40R, what the zoning is being proposed for this location, and the justifications, and then we'll open up the predominately. We want to take this time to allow the public comment about the zoning regulations.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, all. I just want to do a quick check. Am I audible to folks in the back of the room? Okay.
A little closer to the mic.
Okay, how is that for this corner?
Better.
Okay. To that point, I do know that we're a pretty full house tonight, but if folks who are sort of in the entryway, if there are open seats, it would be great to have you fill in, just so that the public comment portion of the meeting, we're going to go table by table as much as possible to make sure we, you know, get as many public comments as is possible. So it'd be great to have as many people in the center room as possible, but we will take public comment from the enter room as well. Okay, as the mayor mentioned, just very quickly, I want to recognize the DPCD staff who are assisting in this meeting tonight. That includes Senior Arts and Culture Planner Julie Berry, Senior Economic Development Planner Stephanie Owens, and the city's Conservation Agent Rachel Ruslavich. And as the mayor mentioned, the presentation tonight will have two parts. I will do a broad overview of both 40R and smart growth, which are somewhat entwined concepts, and then we will speak specifically about the contents of the preliminary application to the Executive Office for Housing and Livable Communities, which contains the zoning proposal. I may move quickly through this material, and that is in service, again, of taking as much public comment as is possible. As the mayor said, you can consult ImagineSalem.org for information on 40R, including an FAQ on frequently asked questions about 40R. The draft application is also available for review there as well. So as stated, you're going to hear smart growth very often this evening, so that we all have a shared understanding of smart growth. I wanted to provide this slide, which lists out sort of the key principles of the concept. Smart growth is a planning approach which prioritizes a mix of building and use types, housing and transportation options, really in service of creating lively urban spaces. Smart Growth America, which is an organization that promotes smart growth, states that above all, smart growth is about helping every community become more economically prosperous, socially equitable, and environmentally sustainable places to live, helping everyone flourish. As you'll see in this list of principles, smart growth is intended to preserve open spaces, farmland, natural beauty, and sensitive environmental areas by, if we look to the next bullet point, directing development towards existing communities, which means density. When we talk about 40R, we're referencing Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40R, which is also known as the Smart Growth Zoning and Housing Production Act. Its intent is to encourage smart growth, so sustainable housing development resulting in a mix of building types and uses with varied housing and mobility options for the residents. Oh, pardon me. It seems the slides are not available to Zoom participants, so we're going to take a quick moment to put them up on Zoom so that those following along from home have access to this information as well. Thank you, John. So again, its intent is to encourage sustainable housing development, which means a variety of building types and uses, as well as varied housing and mobility options in one area.
Elena, do you mind since they asked me to read it off from the mic since they asked me to announce it? That way everybody can hear it. Is that okay?
Sure.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
I'm so sorry.
It's all right.
Okay, so the webinar ID for anybody interested in joining is 810-946-59284. And then the password is 772599. Thank you. Sorry for your interruption.
Thank you, Elena. For anyone who wasn't able to catch that, I'll also note that the Zoom information for this meeting is available if you go to the City of Salem website, go to the calendar, and then select Mayor's Public Hearing. The information would be a live link from that webpage, so that is also an option available to you. So 40R, again, is Massachusetts General Law, which is meant to encourage smart growth development. It creates incentives through cash payments to municipalities that adopt 40R smart growth overlay zoning. And the state has certain criteria that any adopting municipality must prove that their zoning overlay meets, and that is to ensure that any community receiving those payments is furthering the state's cause, which through this legislation is housing development, and particularly housing development which has smart growth principles. There are two primary forms that zone initiation can take. One is where a municipality identifies a location where it would like to see smart growth zoning take place, and then creates a zoning overlay. And if someone is listening along, could we mute the meeting through the Zooms, just so we don't get feedback? Thank you. So again, just to restart, there are two primary forms in which the zoning can be initiated. One is where the municipality identifies a location where it believes smart growth zoning would be particularly advantageous. A zoning overlay is established, and the hope is that development would follow under that zoning overlay. The alternative is where it is a collaboration between a municipality and a project team, which has a project which they believe advances smart growth principles and is resonant with the priorities of that municipality, and then together zoning is created, which would allow for that proposed project to be permitted underneath that zoning overlay. So it creates a frame which could support that future project that, again, advances the city priority. The sub-district that we'll be speaking about this evening falls into that second category. So as stated previously, Mass General Law articulates minimum requirements that any zoning overlay which would be considered 40R has to meet. Again, the state is the determinant if the proposed zoning meets those criteria through its office of the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. We'll go through these criteria here. So it has to be in an eligible location. The state wants these districts and the future residents who may live in them to be in amenity-rich locations. Eligible locations include locations within a half mile of a transit station, or locations that are near to commercial centers. A municipality could also make an argument to the state as to other criteria of a specific location. We've lost the slides. Could I get IT? Thank you for your patience, and thank you for notifying me that the slides had dropped off. I also just want to say thank you to John Ankelitz from the city's IT department, who will be a crucial assist to us for this evening. Okay, hearing nothing, I'm going to continue on with the presentation. So I think we covered eligible locations, which is our first column here. Infrastructure. The state wants to know that the area in which a district would be located has the appropriate infrastructure, so sewer, water, et cetera, to serve the projected growth, or that it will have adequate infrastructure within five years. This is an administrative review conducted by the relevant city departments. Minimum housing. Given that a goal of this legislation is the creation of housing, the state has a minimum residential density requirement for multifamily housing. The zoning must allow for, at minimum, 20 units per acre. Minimum affordability. The state is also interested in seeing an increase in affordable housing. Given that, the state has required that any eligible 40R district have zoning that requires at least 20% of housing units developed to be affordable, and 80% of the area median income, a municipality can decide to provide more or deeper affordability beyond that District size.
Sorry, this is to help the folks in the Zoom room hear better. So the Zoom is coming through here, so you'll have to put your paper here, but if you speak there and there, they should be able to hear you more clearly. Sorry for the entry.
This is why it is great to have such a deep bench in the planning department. So district size. Municipalities can create multiple districts, but no individual district can be larger than 15% of a municipality's land area. If there are multiple districts within a municipality, the total land area of all districts cannot exceed 25% of that municipality's land area. In Salem, 15% of the land area is 785 acres, and 25% is over 1,300 acres. As of right approval. In a 40R overlay district, so long as a project complies with the established overlay zoning, it can only be subject to review by the planning board as a site plan review. The planning board cannot deny a project that meets the zoning requirements unless it has serious adverse impacts which cannot be mitigated. The planning board can place reasonable conditions on such a project, so long as there is a clear connection between the impact of the project and the proposed condition. An appeal process. 40R zoning is meant to make land use decisions predictable, so the state law has very clear requirements as to the appeal process for any projects permitted underneath the established district. So that means, as is stated here, parties appealing a project approval underneath the overlay zoning must post a bond to cover the potential cost of delays to developers. Again, that is a state requirement in 40R. And further, again, the state would review any proposed district against its requirements and determine its eligibility. So what are the benefits of a 40R district? There are some financial incentives provided by the state to encourage municipalities to support this type of smart growth zoning. That includes a one-time zoning incentive payment, which is related to the proposed density of the future district, as the law is intended to incentivize housing production. There is also a $3,000 bonus unit payment, and that is issued when building permits are issued for new housing within the overlay district. There is also a companion law, Chapter 40S, which makes adopting municipalities eligible for reimbursement for any additional costs of educating any new school-aged children living in smart growth districts. Further, it gives adopting municipalities higher state matches for new school facilities, and it also gives them more favorable consideration when they apply for certain state grants. 40R is also considered a proactive tool, so in contrast to a comprehensive permit, which you may have heard referred to as 40B, this tool allows for participation via public hearings like this, for the community to be involved in the crafting of the zoning of the 40R overlay district. 40R districts can also include design standards, provided the municipality can demonstrate that they will not unreasonably impair the development of projects in the district. Lastly, and this is a really key box here, it supports the creation of housing, which is a need here in Salem, it is a need in the Commonwealth, and we know generally it is a need throughout the nation. So the process for 40R, I know this slide is busy, I know there's a lot going on, I'm going to walk you through it, because I know that there has been a lot of conversation about the process, and there were significant concerns about people's ability to give public comment, and sort of what this process looked like. So we're going to talk about it here. So as you see, these boxes are color-coded, and that is to speak to sort of the different layers of interactive requirements. And so this gold box here that says "Community Meeting," that's not required by state law. That was a decision by the City of Salem to ask that any project team that was considering broaching the topic of a 40R and bringing a project forward under a potential 40R smart growth zoning overlay district needed to have a community meeting prior to the start of any zoning conversation, so that the community was aware of the potential of that project. For the sub-district we'll be discussing tonight, they have hosted those community meetings. So we are in this second box here, the public hearing on the preliminary application. That's indicated with a star, because it is an opportunity for public comment. I know we've had some tech disruptions tonight, but I'm going to try to move through this quickly, so that we can take public comment tonight, and you will also have the ability to submit public comment for two weeks after this hearing date. So after this step, we will take all of the public comments that we hear tonight, as well as all of the written comments, and we will review them. The city may make changes to the contents of the preliminary application as a result of public comment. If that occurs, we need to provide a summary in the application which identifies the changes. Additionally, all comments received are packaged as part of that application to the state. So the next step after this evening, and after the consideration of all of those public comments and potential changes, would be the submission of the preliminary application to the state. The state then has 60 days to evaluate the proposal against its criteria. At that point, they would issue a letter back to Salem indicating if the proposal is eligible, conditionally eligible, or not eligible. If it is eligible or conditionally eligible, the municipality is allowed to move forward with local consideration of the zoning, which is this bar box in sort of a brown. For those of you who are familiar with zoning processes, this is the same local adoption process for any zoning amendment. That includes opportunities for public comment. So that includes a joint public hearing with city council and the planning board. That can be one meeting, that can be several, depending on sort of the depth of discussion, the amount of questions, the amount of public comment received. Once that joint public hearing is closed, that matter is referred to the planning board for their recommendation on the draft zoning. Then the city council receives that recommendation, and then they have to, at minimum, approve the zoning via two votes. And that's a minimum. During that process, they have the ability to refer the item out to committees, so that could be further discussion concerning the zoning. If it is successful in getting those two votes from city council, we then submit the final zoning to the state for their final approval. After that, we move into this brown box as well with another star, and that is the process for any project which would be seeking to be permitted underneath the established zoning overlay district. And that would involve a public hearing with the planning board, and if any of you have been in touch with the planning board, that is usually far more than one meeting. And again, that would be the time where public comment can be taken, as well as there will be discussions around appropriate conditions to put on any application that comes before that board. And then this final step is largely administrative, where the city reports to the state on activity related to the 40R smart growth districts within the municipality. So why consider 40R smart growth zoning? Since 2010, the city's population has increased more rapidly than our housing supply, and that's shown in this graph here. Additionally, Salem's estimated median income is roughly $68,000 versus $113,000 in the greater Boston metro area. Roughly 48% of Salem households, roughly half of our households, report low to moderate incomes, meaning they earn at or below 80% of the area median income, and that means they would qualify for some form of affordable housing. Additionally, because of these facts, the city's housing roadmap, which is our guiding housing policy document, identifies a need to increase our supply of housing units, particularly affordable housing units. And the opportunity of smart growth through 40R allows us to respond to that need while leveraging state support and state incentives. So now we're going to transition to speak about the details of the proposed zoning, and that is the contents of the preliminary application that we would make to EOHLC, which again is the state determining body. So where we are now, this is the second step again of that process slide. This hearing is intended to share information and collect public comment concerning the establishment of a smart growth overlay district in the city of Salem. The preliminary application to EOHLC, which includes the draft zoning and the map amendment and the district boundaries, is available for review at City Hall Annex and on ImagineSalem.org. Also, pardon me, ImagineSalem.org. Also on ImagineSalem.org, again, there is an FAQ which provides answers to commonly received questions that we've seen about 40R, so please refer to that resource. Again, this presentation will be posted there as well. And again, we're taking public comment this evening on that preliminary application, which includes the zoning, the details of which we're about to discuss, and that should be the focus of public comment this evening. So the zoning proposal included in the preliminary application has sort of two aspects. There is an umbrella ordinance, and that is because the city is considering more than one 40R district. For the meeting this evening, we're focused on an umbrella section, which includes the requirements of state law and sections that would apply to any future smart growth overlay district established within the city of Salem. That contains the purpose, the definitions, the uses, and the process which would apply to all future districts. The zoning that we'll discuss tonight also includes the details of smart growth overlay Subdistrict 1, or SGO1. The zoning attached to any future sub-district would follow the same two-step process, so again, the state and local review if we were to add any future districts, and those future districts could also have their own additional uses and dimensional affordability and parking requirements and design standards as well. The intent is that any district is responsive to the context in which they're located and that they advance the city's priorities. So this is the language which is in the draft umbrella ordinance, again, which is the focus of the preliminary application. Much of this language comes from the state's template. However, I will note that Bullet 1A has been augmented to sort of speak to Salem's specificity. I'm going to go ahead and read that aloud, because I'm seeing some squinting. That says, "Enable an increase in housing production in resource-rich areas of the city that will provide for a full range of housing choices for households of all incomes, ages, and sizes, in order to preserve the city of Salem's multifaceted community character." Also included in the draft umbrella ordinance are the uses that the city would like to see in a potential smart growth overlay district. That includes residential uses, like supportive housing. It also includes uses like educational, commercial, civic, and medical uses. And the goal of this variety of uses is to achieve that smart growth goal of vibrant, mixed-use community spaces. So now we're going to move into the details of smart growth overlay Subdistrict 1. This district is proposed to be located at 56 Margin Street, 54 Margin Street, 7 High Street, 20 Endicott Street, and 24 Endicott Street. You'll see in this map here, the parcels which are shown in blue is the proposed district in question. The dotted line that surrounds it indicates a half a mile from the City of Salem commuter rail station, so the proposed district is within that half-mile radius. This chart here compares the details of the district against the state requirements. At this time, the city believes the proposal to be eligible with the state requirements. An eligible location, it is within that half-mile distance from a commuter rail station. The infrastructural adequacy assessment is an administrative process, which is currently underway with the city engineer's office. The minimum housing requirement, it exceeds the minimum. Currently proposed, it is 115 units per acre, but bear in mind, the site is only comprised of .689 acres. Minimum affordability, it far exceeds the state's minimum affordability. Again, that minimum is 20% of units, at 80% AMI. As drafted, this district would propose 75% of units permitted in the district at 60% area median income. And district size, again, it is .689 acres, it does not exceed 15% of the city of Salem's land area. So this slide here shows the proposed dimensional requirements of SGO1 against the requirements listed in the base zoning for its neighboring zones, so that is R2, Residential 2 Family, and the B5, the central business district. You'll also see in the graphic below, this shows the Margin Street facing side of the district, its current context today, and it also indicates what a 60-foot height allowance So this slide here, I just want to put in context the previous slide. What we saw was the proposed residential density of the proposed sub-district, SGO1, alongside its neighboring districts, the R2 and the B5. However, I do want to be clear that the existing zoning that is listed in the zoning ordinance is not necessarily what we see on the ground, and that is because Salem is a community that has a lot of non-conformity within our zoning. And so this map utilizes Massachusetts Housing Partnership's Residency Tool, and that's available online, and it shows the residential density of all parcels within a .2-mile radius of the proposed district. As you can see, even within the R2 zone, which is on this side of the screen, many of those parcels already host more than the two housing units allowed by the underlying zoning, and/or exceed the set dwelling unit per acre requirement listed in the zoning. Further, when we look at certain housing typologies, like apartments with over eight units, which is this line that's highlighted here, we see existing residential densities above what is being proposed for SGO1. So this slide shows the proposed parking requirements for smart growth overlay Subdistrict 1. Smart growth means moving away from car dependence, and again, the district is located within a half a mile of the commuter rail station and is near to commercial amenities. Additionally, housing units which do not have dedicated parking tend to be more affordable, given the high cost of parking. These factors are reflected in the proposed parking ratios.
For those of us that cannot read it, could you say how many units are required for a parking space, please?
Sure. So, under the current proposal, one dwelling unit would need to provide .05 parking spaces per unit for supportive housing.
I'm sorry, did we get it?
So the proposed parking requirement for supportive housing units, which would include items like SROs and include services provided to residents, would require .05 parking spaces per unit. So we're going to take public comment at the end of the presentation. Again, the parking requirements are part of the proposed zoning, so you're welcome to offer public comment at that time about the parking ratios, if you are so inclined.
People can't read your slides.
People can't read the slides.
Is it because of the glare?
Yes.
Would individuals in the enter room be interested in moving into the center space so that there would be less glare?
There's plenty more chairs. Come get 'em.
There's space over here.
It sounds like there is additional space, so we're going to go back a slide, and if folks want to come into the center room and be able to read the slide, you're more than welcome to do so.
Because the bottom part has glare. Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
Folks, no, this isn't the [inaudible]. Okay, so it's on the website. We want to submit comments specific to this.
Yeah, all right, Teedix. Okay, so to acknowledge the fact that it sounds like it's not just the glare, it's also the font. There's some trouble reading it. I'm going to read it aloud. But I also do want to note that the full draft preliminary application, which includes the proposed parking requirements, is available within the preliminary application, which is posted on ImagineSalem.org. And just to be clear, again, we're taking public comment tonight. We are also taking public comment for two full weeks after this hearing. So you are more than welcome also to review the entire presentation and submit a comment now and in the future. But I'm going to read through these proposed parking ratios.
Can you slow it down a little bit so people can follow the words since they can't read it all of them?
Sure, I can slow down, definitely. So these are the proposed parking requirements for SGO One, which again is the proposed Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict One. For a dwelling unit use, you would need to provide .05 parking spaces per unit. For a supportive housing unit, you would need to provide .05 parking spaces per unit. For a medical use, you would need to provide one parking space per every 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. For an educational use, you would need to provide one space for every 5,000 square feet of floor space. For an office use, you would need to provide one parking space per every 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. For a research and development use, you would need to provide one parking space per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. For a recreational or civic use, you would need to provide one parking space per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. For a retail use, you would need to provide one parking space per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area of the building, excluding storage areas. And for a club or lodge, which is underneath civic use, you would need to provide one space per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area. Again, the entire text of the zoning is available in the preliminary application, and that's available on ImagineSalem.org.
What's the definition of supportive housing?
So that is listed within the zoning, which is available on ImagineSalem.org. I don't have the text with me right this moment.
What do you think it means?
Life Bridge.
So this is not a Q and A. Again, I just do want to make clear that the purpose of this is to hear from all of you through public comment. And I don't want to curtail that, but the longer the presentation goes, the less time there is to hear from you tonight. Again, we'll take written public comment for two weeks after. And now, just to be clear, just to be clear, I just don't want to misspeak and misrepresent the definition. The definition has been thoughtfully crafted and it is listed in the proposed zoning, which is publicly available on ImagineSalem.org. So we're going to move on and talk about, excuse me, no. Just to make sure we get through this and provide public comment and make sure everyone has adequate time to speak, we're going to talk about why the city is proposing this specific subdistrict. So the housing roadmap reveals a mismatch between our household sizes and the size of our housing units in the city. About seventy-one percent of Salem's households are one- and two-person households, whereas only twenty-four percent of our housing units are studio or one-bedroom units. We also know that our persons struggling with homelessness and housing costs within the city. Under the current zoning, there is limited ability for, to create single-room occupancy SRO units. Allowing for new SRO units, which are typically more affordable than other housing units due to their small size, will help in responding to both needs. This would be made possible via the supportive housing definition proposed in the umbrella ordinance. Lastly, this zoning overlay responds to three strategies identified in the city's housing roadmap. Again, the housing roadmap is the city's guiding housing policy. And that document contains thirty community-vetted strategies for the city to advance its housing policy. It responds to Strategy 17, which recommends the city consider rezoning areas within the city to support dense housing development. It responds to Strategy 19, which encourages the city to advance zoning that promotes efficiency housing units, which include single-room occupancy units, given their natural affordability. And it responds to Strategy 20, which encourages the city to find opportunities to leverage state and other public funds to support in the creation and rehabilitation of housing. So what benefits will the city see? Again, crucially, the city would see additional housing units affordable to households making at the most sixty percent area median income. Again, and there is the also added benefit of the financial incentives provided by the state. So we are now going to transition to the public comment section of the meeting. I do want to be clear that the focus of public comment should be on the preliminary application, which contains the proposed Smart Growth Overlay zoning that has two components, the umbrella ordinance and the details of Smart Growth Overlay Subdistrict One. All comments received tonight and by writing, and again, that will be for a two-full week, well, received prior to today and will extend for two weeks from today to August 15th at 7:00 PM, will be included in the preliminary application to the state procedure around public comment. To accommodate all who would like to speak, we're going to place a time limit on spoken public comment tonight. Again, there's no limit on written comment. But the time limit tonight will be one minute, and that is because we have likely more than sixty people who would like to speak. And the CLC does close at 8:00 PM, and we have to be out the door then so that the staff here can close the building.
If people on Zoom land and show up and be able to speak tonight?
Yes, that is a great point. We are going, so staff will take one comment from each table in the room and then a comment from virtual participants. They will be treated as a separate room. And then we will return to that first comment and continue until we get all public comments or we run out of time. If you would be willing, you are welcome to state your name and address at the top of your comments. Please direct your comments to the city and not to other attendees. Please note, this is an opportunity to collect comment. Again, those comments go on the preliminary application. It is not a Q and A session. For Zoom attendees, please use star nine to indicate a desire to speak. We have a staff member who will be monitoring the Zoom room. When it comes time for the Zoom room to participate, Stephanie Owens, the planner staffing Zoom, will read off your name or phone number. And at that time, you will press star six to unmute yourself and give your comment. There are comment cards distributed throughout the room. You are welcome to write a written comment here tonight. Again, that will be included in the application. And you can always email me at EEImert@Salem.com until 7:00 PM on Thursday, August 15th. Again, that's a two-week period from this evening.
So you're saying that we have to, like, each person at the table has to rattle and the survivor gets to give their public comment?
Hopefully, it won't come to that. While they're preparing to receive public comment, you'll all see these cards on your table. These are the written public comment cards that we'll be taking in at the end of the evening. There are also pins on the tables. If you need more pins or more comment cards, please just slide me down. I'm happy to help get those to you. Feel free to start writing your comments now.
If we can keep the barber in the room to a low, dull roar so that everybody can hear the comments that are coming, that would be wonderful.
Good evening. I'm Jane Arlander, and I've been in the medical field for over forty years. And I'm here tonight because I'm bewildered and disappointed that our city leaders and planners are embracing and supporting a model of caring for our unhoused residents that is outdated, it is shortsighted, it is non-conprehensive, and it's inhumane. Why is it inhumane? Because sheltering, the sheltering model, unlike Housing First model, does not allow for privacy or meaning socialization. It doesn't meet the psychosocial needs of struggling unhoused persons. And it does not foster individual identity. Furthermore, I'm really ashamed of the city planners and city leaders for choosing the Smart Growth zoning, Chapter 40 R developmental tool, because it forcibly locates this project in Salem's compact, busy downtown, next to several historic neighborhoods and venues. Finally, let me tell you, I don't think that 40R or growth, smart growth zoning is a match for the Life Bridge project. Why? Because as we just learned, that smart growth planning or legislation was passed in 2004, and it was to create a range of housing choices for households of all incomes, all ages, and all sizes. This project at Life Bridge is for eighteen and over. So it does not meet an important criteria.
Good evening, Salem. My name is Tom Kamada. I live on 35 Endicott Street. I had an across from the Italian Club. And for the last year, or the last, actually, it was on May 14th, after being harassed and threatened physically, not lately, by a group of homeless individuals that were living in a car on the street in front of the club. On May 14th, two of these individuals decided to attack me in front of my home where my children and grandchildren are, pointing to my grandchildren and telling me what they were going to do to them. Okay? One of these individuals, it turns out, is a convicted bank robber from Lynn. The other one is a convicted arsonist from Everett. These are the lovely individuals that our elected individuals in this city have invited, not just welcomed, but invited into our city. Okay? These are the type of individuals that people in this street room need to know, okay, about when they come into this shelter.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. I'm Richard O'Leary, President of Historic Salem Incorporated. I would like to submit comment on behalf of Historic Salem Incorporated on this proposed 40R zoning. Historic Salem has been involved for eighty years in the planning and zoning initiatives to support our mission of ensuring that historic resources of Salem are preserved and that new development complements the historic character of the city. We are aware that this is the first of at least three 40R zoning districts, all of which will affect different types of historic resources. In the case of the Greater Endicott Neighborhood and St. Mary's Church-related buildings in particular, these are resources that we believe are eligible for the National Register of Historic Places and as such deserve thoughtful consideration to the effect of this zoning on those resources. While we have had discussions with the development team over several months about the scale and design of the proposed project.
This is typical of the city not to listen to anybody.
Let our students talk. Let us talk.
So the purpose, the purpose of the time limit, the purpose of the time limit is to enable the largest...
Let us talk.
Richard, you can finish your statement.
Thank you.
Hey folks, if anyone would like to comment, speak for a minute. Like Lana mentioned, this is not the last opportunity, not just to comment on this particular zoning, but on the application, the additional time to provide comment. So please be thoughtful about the time you're using tonight. Really, I understand that people want to talk about the proposed use and the development project here. We're really interested in your feedback around the zoning. Okay, thank you.
We were surprised and disappointed that the proposed zoning provides no design standards that encourage reuse of historic buildings or buildings that are compatible with the scale and design of a surrounding historic residential neighborhood. Considering the location of this property in Salem's historic downtown and the visibility it will have, there must be design standards included in the application. We do not think that this zoning ordinance is ready to go to the state for approval. We urge the city to engage in an open public process around design standards where the district, as allowed by the 40R statute, is widely used in other districts in Salem and in 40R districts in other cities and towns. We will be submitting a formal letter of recommendations after this hearing.
Hi, Jeff Felling. So I obviously feel for you in terms of, you know, having attacks and all that kind of stuff. That is not going to be those small, we need to find housing for people and deal with the homeless population. We can't just go into another neighborhood. So those kinds of things for you that happen to you, no place for that. But on the other hand, we need to be able to embrace, you know, and help the homeless population or those who are struggling here in Salem. But the other thing is that, you know, I'm really concerned about how the architectural, you know, it's not appropriate for a community that so is identified by its historic architecture to put a large building in that area. So I'm not sure that that's well followed out. The last thing I just wanted to ask about, which was, are the appealers provide a bond to cover the cost of delay? So it seems like you're putting the potential cost on the people who probably have the least amount of money, relatively speaking. Because you said, well, if you're going to challenge something, you need to come up with money. And that's not, that's not, we aren't the people that should be coming up with the money for the appeal. That should be a free process.
Oh, because you want to do it to anybody, so I understand. Look, we all agree that Salem must address the affordable housing crisis and the problem of homelessness. That's not the issue. But 40R is not the solution. It puts a sledgehammer into the hands of developers who lethally smash everything that Salem residents care about. And it forces those residents to sit back and watch with no power to stop it. SGO One, the Life Bridge Parcell, is the wrong location for a shelter and SRO housing. This is one of Salem's most visible sites in our civic center. And what happens here will affect our ability to attract the kind of development and investment we want and need, including affordable housing. Above all, Salem must ensure its economic sustainability. And that means protecting and growing the tax base, protecting our tourism economy, and maintaining the quality of life and spirit that attracts businesses, visitors, and residents. A regional homeless center in our downtown will destroy all that. Other cities have recently exerted the political leadership to build and relocate new homeless facilities
Come back and let her finish. One more minute.
Yeah, she has our minute. She took her time to break that out there. It should be written. We take five minutes.
We should all listen. That's the whole point.
That's the whole point. Salem is always the community of us.
It's less than five minutes. But we've just made the point I was about to make. 40 R is intended to stipulate citizen voices. Why, of course, developers in the city voluntarily give up control over its largest projects? We should all consider what it really means when self-described progressive city leaders show disdain for their constituents, avoid transparency, and court the favors of deep-pocketed developers while stripping residents of any rights. There's a name for that, and we all know it. It's called autocracy.
I just want to provide a face of housing insecurity. That's me. My senior year at high school in 2007, I almost lost my home. I don't know if anyone else that resonates here. Does it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I still have nightmares about that, though I'm 35. I believe that in order to preserve the past, we have to look to the future. And I believe adding more housing to Salem is one of those futures. I also believe that these conversations, where the majority of people are saying no, and that is mostly of a certain demographic. I am saying that the demographic. Let me finish. If every town is having these conversations, where are people going to go? To the ocean? You're going to push them out to sea? No, that sounds ridiculous, right? No, let me finish because you gave everyone else more time. I want people to really think about what they're saying and how these conversations are playing out. Because I lived in Boston for 15 years, saying exact conversations.
How you doing? So basically, my name is Al-... I'll give it back. I'm not missing. All right, so basically, to make it real quick, my name is Alhambro Alvarez. I've been a resident at 12 Pratt Street my whole life. Basically, what's coming down to this whole situation, where we're starting with the first location, which is Life Bridge, which everybody understands. We understand about affordable housing. I lived in a one-bedroom apartment my whole life with four people in that bedroom. I grew up poor, okay? So one thing about that, I understand what you're saying. And what really offends me and really makes me upset is that this whole project is not for the better of Salem. People don't have an opportunity at Life Bridge. If you're a Salem resident, you don't get first choice. You don't get any choice. If all the other communities that come there, and you're making a homeless shelter in the middle of downtown where the tax base, where we need the taxes for businesses to sustain, because all the residents have to then pay up the tax bill, which we are going to lose. We've had this conversation many times when we were talking earlier with group meetings for the neighborhood. I have a park in front of my house that I can't let my kids go and play. Because you want to know why? Because there's people shooting up heroin inside the park in needles. It's not the fact that it's affordable housing. It's the fact of what it is. And people, there's 600 units that just went in for teens. The point is that people need to understand it's not a normal. So what's very frustrating, because I've been trying to do this for 15 years, since Life Bridge, I moved there, and it was at the Crumbby Shelter a long time ago. And the hotel wanted to move so they could make condos. What is not fair is the people who are affected by this every single time never have a voice to say what they want and what happens. And then nobody listens to us, so we deal with the problems. I told them, bear with all respect. I don't mind. I'll build tents next to your house and let them live there for you, and I will bring them food myself. Because if you don't live there, you don't understand the problems. And that's what's so frustrating, and nobody understands and listens. That's why everybody here is so upset. I just wish people would listen and understand that. No one feels the same.
The guy with the red shirt had it canned up the whole time.
Yeah, this table was in John's.
Okay. I do not support this 40 R. For the last three years, my name's Annie Ayres. The last three years, Salem has approved or is in the process of approving about 1,000 units. So we really are building multifamily housing. They're doing their part. Many of those units are quite affordable. I also do not approve this because it removes a lot of local control. I served on the zoning board, the design review board, and the historic commission. And in the process of reviewing projects, there's a lot of give and take. My experience has been that's very good to have that give and take between developers and the community. And I think it's very important to keep that community input into the projects that are built here. And this proposal here opens the door, as was said, to three projects. The Shetland Mills, the South Salem campus, as well as the Life Bridge life proposal. That those taken together is about another 1,000, 1,500, maybe even 2,000 units for the shut, if that's what they want. We want local input into those projects. I mean, we are building units now with existing zone. I think the process works pretty well. So I really want to keep that local control. I do not support this overlay district.
So we're going to take a comment from Zoom. We're going to try to take a comment from Zoom.
Right here. Over there.
We're going to try to take a comment.
The red shirt. Just come over here. The internet.
So we are going to take one comment from the Zoom room?
Come on.
These people have also been waiting, and then we will resume the in-the-room comments. We're going to take one comment from Zoom as though they were a table within the space.
Ask them if they can type it into the chat box. Ask if they can type it into the chat box.
This group would ask for one moment to be enabled someone from the Zoom room to save the time to attend this meeting as well tonight. We'll be able to get a comment, and then we'll go back to the table by table public comment. Felipe Zambrerolino, I'm going to allow you to talk.
Hello, I'm Nancy. I'm from 19th Bush Street. I just want to recognize, first of all, that this is Salem's first 40 R. And it's amazing to me that our first 40 R is the tackle homeless. Our statewide housing plan that we met with thousands and thousands of people across the city, just based, we had a hundred of comments coming in, and then there's thousands of comments came through. We have refined this many good points that I want to walk through today. And I do want to give a true evolution, a vision for the city to see housing as a human right. And I will ask that the life limit equals your happiness. And we're tackling this first 40 R as a tool, a factor in housing practices. And that's really fascinating, I think. Just double-check it. Can I have two more minutes? I don't think we're getting any more.
If you could, if anyone understood that, to repeat it back so we can understand it.
Yeah, please.
So unfortunately for participants from the Zoom room, we are having audio issues hearing you. So I'm going to encourage everyone to submit. You can write it like this. I'm going to encourage everyone in the Zoom room to submit a written comment because it does seem like the comments coming in via the Zoom are quite hard to hear. And we do want to be sure that we are getting your comments. And I apologize for the inconvenience. We're now going to go back to taking comment from individuals in the room here at the CLC.
First of all, to the woman over here, our neighborhood is full of affordable housing, and that's what we're trying to protect. This 40 R is supposed to be, on its surface, is supposed to be about mixed income with inclusionary district, a mixed income inclusionary district with a full range of housing choices, affordable housing, open space, environmentally concerned. None of this is part of this proposal. The city's long application for the Commonwealth does not include any details of what will be built on this land. Not the Life Bridge Havelite Plan is not a mention, not even a mention. It will only include a homeless shelter and SRO housing restricted to individuals above the age of 18. These buildings will warehouse people, including those with criminal records, sex offenders, post-babbling mental health issues, drug and alcohol abuse, right above a Byron and just steps from a playground. Life Bridge is cash-strapped. They can't afford sufficient services for their clients. They rely on the Salem police as their quasi-security and medical unit. City Hall has told us that Salem is fronting the overflow shelter on Canal Street because Life Bridge can't afford it. If they expand, they'll need to cut clients even more. That's more people on the street. The Commonwealth needs to understand what goes with this rezoning, the buildings and the issues attached. I'm holding floor plans and renderings dated February 2024. These plans and the details I've just mentioned and are part of the public record must legally be included in the application. Havelite and Life Bridge are run by people from wealthy of surrounding towns like Marblehead, places with no shelters, no SRO housing for the unhoused, no pan handling. At the end of the day, they drive homes to their pretty little homes, and Salem is stuck with what they've left behind. Let Life Bridge update their shelter within the current zoning, which protects Salem residents from oppressive, ill-fitting developments like this one.
So just in recognition, it seems there is little appetite here for the time limit. So we are going to let people speak. However, please do try to keep it concise because there are a lot of people interested in giving public comment. If you are not able to share the full breadth of your thoughts, again, please submit a written comment. We're now going to take some comments from the anteroom because I believe they have not yet had the chance to give comment.
Hello, my name is James Aveller. I live at High Street. Yes. And I've been living in the area for 61, actually 63 years. Now, the thing is, people call us NIMBYs. And the problem with that is, we've been actually, as they said in the 90s, they've had that particular shelter from Crumpy Street Church and gone over there. And they've actually come over as overflow into our area. And it's just been one of those situations where you do want to help the people. We also want to make sure that they have the particular resources that are supposed to stay. Right now, Life Bridge is not saying that. When they bought the Italian Club, when they were having the original particular meeting with them, the head of the shelter was telling them down at the Italian Club, "Oh, the whole neighborhood's for it." "Well, don't ever talk to me, and don't ever talk to anybody else in the neighborhood too." So then they can fall steep. And this should also be included in the comments, too. And I mean, you have a couple of councilors who are former police that are on it now, and they understand what's going on with the shelter because they've looked at it pretty much. One thing I did want to mention, I'm on the Front of the Broad Street Cemetery. And I know the dominant mayor showed up for the Memorial Day celebration for the Revolutionary People and the Civil War veterans, both of them. And the gentleman who did the presentation was vice president of the Front of the Broad Street Cemetery. So he enjoyed it. And actually, I understand his industry, but... But the thing was, after that, is I went and talked to him, because I'm also on the Front of the Broad Street Cemetery. He told me about that 5:00 in the morning, and he had to take almost three hours to clean up all kinds of trash, including used condoms. There's a lot of stuff going on there. The city of Salem over the several years, and I'm not sure how long it's been since you sailed, but there is a lot of money to be spent to clean that up, restoration of the particular gravestones. I mean, you have Colonel Timothy Pickering, who is a Civil War hero, not Civil War, sorry, Revolutionary hero, but you also have Civil War heroes there, too. And I mean, it's in disarray. You see, I'm sorry, unfortunately, you see the house up there. And there's all kinds of beer cans, all kinds of arms, all kinds of needles, you know, all kinds of drug activity. And of course, it seems that we use condoms and some other illicit activities. And it's been noticed by some of the people in the buddy line on Burner Street. So is this what they want? They spent a lot of money on it. It's the second oldest burial ground in the United States. And that's, people who are history buffs are attracted to that because of also the Ginnie House down the street, too. I mean, they want to let them go through. Do they want to see what's in there? I mean, again, the police are always stretched, and they can only show up sometimes. But there's no accountability for the shelter when we told them that there are people up in there. So this is not right for us with this 40 R because, again, it's going to open up all Keanu works for other parts of the city. It's going to, you know, everyone can... And unfortunately, that means anything can happen. They can vote-built, bulldozed, any kind of historic situation. And on top of that, they've built skyscrapers now. So I don't really think that they really have to also include the plans going down there when they go from the state. And we should also be able to make comments directly for the people at the state who's the actual person who's doing the review process.
I do want to reiterate that all comments received, particularly written comments, will be provided verbatim to the state. We will provide recording of this meeting as well for spoken comment.
Hello, my name is James. I've been a Salem resident almost my entire life. I support the 40 R overlay to increase the density of Salem to what it would have been more historically. And I think that I work at the hospital, and I hear my coworkers every day talk about how they are going to be commuting more, half an hour, an hour each day to the hospital because they can't afford to live anywhere closer. And I think if we are serious about the housing issue, we need to raise the density of Salem as well as other communities. And this 40 R will do that.
Okay, we'll take one more comment from the anteroom and then return to the table.
I'm going to read, I'm nervous. I was on Zoom, but I couldn't hear anything. So I drew him over here. A little bit over rec. But first of all, I'd like to urge all the speakers, not just the Zoom people, to submit their comments in writing because according to Gilkin to the 40 R, the public hearing comments in writing will be attached, but the oral comments will be summarized. So I would urge everyone to write. Second of all, here are my comments. I am a planner with over 20 years' experience. I moved to Salem to run the technical assistance program for Smart Growth in the local communities for the 34 cities and towns in Essex County. And when I moved here over 17 years ago, I considered Salem the poster child for innovative zoning, primarily because they were the first municipality in the state to pass a zoning overlay district that was attached to a master plan. And the bane of any planner's existence is zoning that does not match a master plan. That was the North River Canal Corridor zoning overlay. My feeling about Salem is that any project that Salem wants to build in Salem can be built without this 40 R overlay district. Adopting the 40 R prima facie doesn't make sense because it's not needed. We already have the will and the way to get this done. Giving up local control for reimbursements Giving up local control for reimbursements from the state that are tiny, approximately one-tenth of our current city budget, to my mind, is not worth it. As was said earlier this evening, Salem is blessed with a deep bench in our planning department. We also have an embarrassment of riches and professional expertise on all of our boards to shepherd any project through the process. Slight caveat at the end of the five things they showed, there is an onerous financial hurdle for an average citizen to post a bond on projects. To my mind, that's a big problem. State funding the reimbursements is not a forever proposition. It's not guaranteed, but once built, the municipal costs are forever. I think we need to move forward with development in a self-sufficient way. We already have expertise. We have the zoning to create the housing we need. Giving away local control to the state for small and insecure funds undervalues our community. Why disempower one of the greatest resources we have, our own brain trust, to do innovative and creatively meet the needs of Salem? I have every confidence in our residents and volunteer boards and professional staff to meet the objectives for development laid out in Imagine Salem, without ceding control to the state for such small money.
So we do just want to ask, are there any tables in the room that no one has spoken from yet? Okay.
I just wanted, can we get a name and contact?
So you're also one of the tables that has not spoken? Okay, so we are going to take the gentleman's standing, and then I will return to this table.
Thank you very much. My name is Pastor James Dixby. I serve at church. It recognizes in Salem, and in Marple and Swansky. I've been there for ten years, and I've never once successfully been able to place a person in transition into Lightbridge, because it's always been full the entire time. This includes people who were in really tough times. It's been very difficult to tell them that they have nowhere to go, and I've had to do that a lot of times. The facilities at Lightbridge are also in need of repair. But I want to say one other thing, as a person who has a church, and who works at a church, and who understands that there may come a day when, because of membership or finances, my church is done, my building remains. If, like the people of this good French Catholic church, make the decision that they would rather transition this building's use into helping the people of Salem and the towns around, which we're also beholden to, then I would give that my blessing. And tell you one other thing. Having had to tell people that there is nowhere for them to go is something that I want you all, if you are praying people, to pray about tonight.
Steve Kapakis. So I want to talk specifically about 40R before I go into some criticism about this meeting. 40R can be classified as nothing but an ultimate failure at state level. We have forty-two other cities and towns that have enacted 40R. What have we got from it? We're averaging two-hundred-and-fifty units a year of housing. 40R is failing to deliver housing. More importantly, 40R is failing to deliver affordable housing. Look at the minimum requirement that was spoken tonight, eighty percent AMI. For those of you that don't know, that's if you earn a hundred thousand dollars a year. The people in Salem who are earning thirty to sixty thousand dollars a year are the ones that need affordable housing. So I have to ask myself, why Salem and why now? This is not an agenda that was put forth by the mayor or the planning department. This is coming from the state. The state is desperate for 40R work, and they see Salem, and they see three massive projects. It's not just about the Lightbridge. It's also about Carver Street, Shetland Park. It's about Salem State University. It's about the top end of Highland Ave. We're talking about over thirty-five hundred units coming here, all because our city wants to push the agenda of our state development. Do me a favor, push the agenda of the residents, all of our residents. We can change our existing zoning. And then, I really wish you were more prepared for this meeting. It shows your lack of responsibility to our residents. When I think of the technical difficulties that have happened tonight, the sun will there, how much time somebody's going to be given, et cetera, et cetera. That all would have been fixed if you came down here and did a dry run a week ago. You would have known where the sun sets. In fact, I can tell you where the sun sets going to set in six months, but you can't figure it out for this meeting? Do us, give us some respect. Let's prepare for these things.
Just quickly to say, I do appreciate the criticism and the frustration and some of the disruptions tonight. We did, in fact, do a dry run, and we did tonight have several surprises, which I know impeded the flow, so my apologies for that. Again, I want to ask, are there any tables from which no one has given a comment? Okay, the back corner.
Thank you. My name is Bess Frederick. I'm not even at High Street, and I'm a professional planner by training, and I would just like to say that I am in favor of this 40R development for a number of reasons. I think, first off, it's kind of a paradox that many folks here today have thought about this zoning process as being something wielded against them, because historically, zoning has been used for exactly the opposite purpose. It has, in fact, segregated people from being able to create greater density in housing and being able to provide for the kinds of affordable housing that a community like ours ought to be striving for. If we are a progressive community, I think we need to engage in some forward thinking about what to, how to provide people with dignity in living. And I think that, in fact, to the questions that have been asked about why we need to use a 40R to achieve that, when we have so many great skills and capabilities within our city, I think the answer is that, look around you, it hasn't happened yet. And because it hasn't happened, these kinds of initiatives are what provoke and really stimulate, or happen, and the opportunity to share with our neighbors our different opinions about what's important in a community like ours, an urban community of diversity, one that we all live here, because we enjoy that diversity. So I'd just like to speak a small voice here in this room today in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Thirty seconds, Vicky Serianni. This meeting is supposed to be about 40R. And I think the presentation was very cogent, and I thank you, because I learned a lot from it. But I don't think people really realize what we are giving up. First of all, we could have designed standards. The state would let us do that. We need to do that. Why wouldn't we do it? And secondly, we've developed a robust process here, the city reviews. I see people who literally spend two, three hours every night reviewing things. That's all, you're not going to, you're not going to get that, and why not? I urge you, if you do 40R, to do it right. Put divine standards in. Let reviews, city reviews, happen. Thank you.
Just over fifteen minutes before we wrap up.
We have to provide everybody equal time. You set the limited form. Can't just close an area and let anyone have spoken.
The building closes.
Yes, the building does close at eight P M. You do have to respect the CLC staff. However, again, this is not the only opportunity to provide public comment. All written public comments will be provided as part of the application and will be considered. So you have two weeks from this evening to submit a written comment. That's my contact information up there, eeyore@salem.com. Again, that's two weeks from this evening.
Hold on. This is the only night you can provide public comment. Everyone has to be providing equal time. If you can't finish it by eight o'clock, then continue the hearing. Mayor, we're done. You really don't have a public speech in limited form.
The public comment collection process for smart growth is not the same as a joint public hearing. It's not the same as a city council hearing. My understanding is when the building closes, the hearing can conclude the opportunity for providing public comment in writing, which is one of the speakers indicated.
You created the limited public forum, time, forum, and...
So right now, you're missing out the time that other people have to speak, so we're going to let them continue speaking, and if you'd like to submit additional comment, submit it, writing, please.
Thanks, Steve. You guys have good points over there, I don't disagree. Mr. Mayor, good evening. My name is Nathan Ritzko. I am a resident of Ward Two, and I'm here to make a comment on behalf of the McIntyre Neighborhood Association. I'm here to speak out against this proposal. Some proponents attacked the majority of us who are against this proposal, saying we're just against density. They even call it the D-word in social media. It's a little bit laughable, but I'm sorry, because it's ridiculous for these reasons. I'm here to set the record straight. We're against this proposal because of the C-words: community, crime, and chaos. On community, everyone who lives in Salem deserves to have a safe, clean neighborhood without trash, needles, and human waste strewn about. But these problems are already here, and this proposal would make them significantly worse. On crime, as you heard tonight, a resident was attacked by two homeless men on Endicott Street, but that is not an isolated incident. In the last four years, our own Salem PD has responded to over six-thousand-two-hundred incidents related to the homeless population, of which one-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty occurred last year alone. These problems are already here, and this proposal would make them significantly worse. On chaos, anyone who has seen the needles in Riley Plaza, the encampments behind Wendy's, the trash strewn about Essex Three by the pen, knows that the homeless population strikes chaos in the heart of our city. Tourists cross the street to avoid it. Residents change their walks to work for safety. Businesses like Flatbread have suffered, and this proposal would make these issues significantly worse. This proposal is a step back in the wrong direction. This is no progress. This is not progressive. This is an attack on the quality of life of our entire community. And we firmly oppose it in the strongest way possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Prime Minister, I'm a member of the City Council for twenty-four years. I'm a member of the School Committee for twelve years. Now, four years from the planning board. So I wish to thank each and every one for being here. We are all human stakeholders, and housing are failing. Housing has a human face. Like she said a while ago, she was homeless. My family was homeless. When we shot this from here, by the time my father died as a leatherworker at fifty-five years of age, leaving six kids, and we were homeless. Addiction was my middle name. I didn't know what the word was when I was seven years old, addiction. So a human base. It's just not the kind people down in Valley Plaza. It's people like myself. Housing has a human base. Is there a best solution? Is there a best one? Absolutely not. As a member of the planning board, thank you for your input tonight. It's valuable, but this is just one solution to the city of Salem. We are a great city with a great potential, we're a city of possibilities. Homelessness is a problem nationwide, sincerely, statewide, not created by Salem. So I thank each and every one of you for being a stakeholder in this. I see it for a human face. I am, I'm not a homeless. I took it by a children. They went, "Why are you homeless?" The home has a human face. So give it a chance. I am here tonight to say, give it a chance. Give it an opportunity. We're here to discuss it. There's not going to be a solve in one evening tonight. But I thank you each and every one for being here. We are looking at a base of very homeless. Now, given the opportunity for training and education, the Salem Navy, Salem was the village that gave me the opportunity. It takes a village to raise a child. Salem Navy, that village. And the city of Salem, they have the opportunity to be here tonight. Thirty-six years on the board, four years on the planning board, I have great respect for the planning board, and thank you, and thank y'all. We're trying, but there's a human base. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Oliver Shander. I live at Ten Pratt Street. I bought the house in two-seventeen. I bought it pre-existing knowing what Lightbridge was, where it was, and what it did. Since I bought it, every day I've had to call the police, take my taxpayer money to get the people that are not supposed to be in the park. That is a kid's park. I have pictures here daily, people sleeping, rugs, everything. That is what they're doing. What is not being done is Lightbridge is not being a good neighbor back to us. Okay? What the problem is, it's not the density and all that, it's the neighborhood, the communication. We know you're going to put this here. You paid eight-hundred thousand dollars for the Columbus building. We know that building is going to stay here. We know it's going to happen. But what we need to know is how you, as a city, are going to protect the residents that are in that areas already. Okay? Those are the things that are important. I know what housing and what homelessness looks like. I know what treatment looks like. I'm a twenty-year alcoholic. I know what these people are going through. I've seen it, I've lived it. But you know what? None of you guys are down there with them. You guys leave them on Margin Street, you leave them on Pratt Street. Nothing is being done about it. You've got, "Oh, call the police." I put it in C-Play. Call the police, call the police. Eight thousand dollars, my taxpayer money, should not be going towards police. It shouldn't. It should be about beautification. You've got planters on Chestnut Street. Where is it happening downtown? Why is it, none of this area is happening? You guys aren't making... This meeting wasn't even posted to the neighbors that live in the neighborhood. Not one letter was sent to us saying, "We want to let you know this is what we're planning," because you are planning it. If you don't think I don't think that, then you wouldn't, they wouldn't allow eight-hundred thousand, because no one with a contingency to purchase a property would say, "Yeah, purchase that for eight-hundred thousand. We're going to just see what happens." You know it's going to happen. What's going to happen with the rest of the neighborhood? What is going to happen to the overlay that's there already? These are people that have been here their whole lives. These are people that have been here two-seventeen. We accept it. We know that there's going to be housing that's needed. But let me tell you something else. When people live in transitional housing for ten years, plus, it's not transitional. I've heard your story, sir. You're right. There isn't homes at Lightbridge. There isn't room, because they're keeping the same people regurgitatively over and over, satisfied this three-thousand-per-unit status quo, but they're not moving in. And where are the rest, where are the seniors going? Boston Street up on a hill where they can barely get safely into their units? Why is nothing being done downtown? Why are they not benefiting? Why are Salem's seniors, because I'm seeing a lot of myself in here, plus older people? Why are we not being given first brighter reviews onto an apartment downtown instead of people coming from all over the country into this place? Well, it's federally funded, we can't control that. That's not true. In Lincoln, they have restrictions. In Berkeley, they have restrictions. This is Lightbridge that is doing this, and this is the Berkeley process, too. They do have restrictions. We need to give priority to the residents that in Salem that deserve it. And you know what else? In the eighties, I worked for the state when we de-institutionalized all the mental health facilities, because it gave people hope to live in communities individually. What you're doing is you're planning a compound of another institution. Unfortunately, this is going to be the homeless one, and they're going to just do nothing more than non-transition, because you're not going to give them the benefits or the treatment. These people need treatment as well, and there's nothing being given to these people to give them that opportunity.
I just do want to re- I just do want to reiterate, in recognition that the CLC does have to close, the hearing will close at 7:45 PM, so please keep your comments free for trying to get as many as possible.
Hi, my name is Bob Femenow. I'm the co-chair of the Greater Endicott Street Neighborhood Association. I live at 32 Endicott, right across the street from the Christopher Columbus Club. I'd like to thank a lot of people that spoke tonight, because you basically stole a lot of things that I wanted to say. I think some of our neighbors spoke about the serious adverse impacts, which was on one of the screens earlier. I think we have shown you that there are serious adverse impacts of doing this project. I also support affordable housing as well, but that's not what this is about. Basically, this is about size. It's too big, it's a city block, it's... Did I hear 115 units? Or 150? I don't know what I read tonight. But it's, it's the size, it's just too big. A year and a half ago, we were approached by two city councilors, and we were told that 40R could not be approved without buy-in from the neighborhood. But we've just learned that massive structures are being planned from Endicott Street right up Pratt Street, and that doesn't even have to be presented to the state from what I'm hearing. That doesn't sound very fair to me. My neighbors are gonna have, if they build on Endicott and Pratt Street, we're gonna have overly large structures within the neighborhood. It's one thing to wanna do something on Margin Street, something maybe of a smaller scale that the neighborhood can get behind, but that's not what it's about. It's just too massive. Thank you.
Hi, this is Linda Farah Russell. I live on 67 Aurora Lane, and I'm cutting back, I've got pages here, and I'm cutting back because of time. This design rips at the heart and soul of one of our neighborhoods, which has already faced many losses over past decades. Harvard Lights knows there is no support from the public on this project, so they have decided to find a workaround, pushing the city to rezone the property using a smart growth overlay to strip. The 40R was first introduced to the city council committee as a whole in May 2024. Then July 10th, the public first heard about it from the developers of the Shepman Park property. Though it was only briefly introduced at the very end of the meeting, they said, "Oh, this is just the early part of the discussions, there'll be lots more meetings about this in the future." Then July, an ordinance is already drafted, and today, it's August 1st, a few weeks later, 40R is being brought up on another major project in our town. So much for early stages of discussion. This feels like it is being pushed along at breakneck speed. This would have a huge impact on our city and needs considerably more discussion before an ordinance of any kind should be voted on, whatever. And I'm adding one of the things, um, no, I gave you it all. I got more, but that's all.
Thanks, home babies, real quick. I just would love to hear as much vim and vigor and passion about our most vulnerable citizens and neighbors as they do about brick and mortar, and concrete, and windows. I think, we heard someone just talk about it's not about density, but then they brought up density. So if it's about a big building on your street, New York didn't sprout out of the ground that way. It built its way up. And that's what's happening here. There's more people, and more housing, and more... I work downtown. I pass by every community you guys are talking about right now, every single day, and it's, it's depressing, I get it, it's scary, I get it. I don't wanna see those people in that situation either. The answer is not to kick them out, or tell them they have no place here. They have a place here, they have a community here, they are neighbors, regardless if they have front doors. Where would you like them to go?
Other communities could help out.
Anyway, I encourage more density downtown. This is a growing city, like you've all said. We've got massive tourism here, we need more space, we need more businesses, we need more housing, we go with those businesses, so A-plus.
Thank you. So we're gonna take a few more comments. I'd love to remind people that your comments should be directed to the city, ideally about the zoning. I understand if you wanna speak about other topics related to this potential proposal, but your comments should not be directed to other residents who are here and trying to provide their own public comment. So please afford your neighbors' respect in making their comments, and direct them towards us. Thank you.
I think people know me, I've spoken at other meetings. I'm Ed Sacco, I live on Winter Street, and also, I have a long history of working with similar types of individuals. In the early 70s, I worked at state hospitals on the back wards, ran some of the first group homes after that, and for 40 years as executive director, developed alternatives to large institutional settings. It can be done, it can be done here in Salem. We've contacted the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We found out that they have money that is available for small programs that can be integrated into the community, just like you both are now, and there's also money for services which are dearly needed on all these individuals. Putting them in a large warehouse type of program is the worst thing we could do for these individuals. It's amazing how somebody like me can tear them apart and bring everyone out again, which is what I did for a living. And I think you all should be aware that the money is available for alternative types of programs that are better for the individuals, better for the city, better for the neighborhood, better for everyone.
Just made a couple of brief comments. I think the proposed development that you're doing, and we learned, I think, tonight, at least I learned tonight for the first time, that this is coupled to a specific project. And I think it's a bit of a shame that you didn't therefore give us details of that project. What you said was you wanted to include the surplus of supportive housing, and personally, I think that's probably a great idea, but you didn't mention the homeless at all. And you didn't mention whether you're gonna do it. Now, expanding the homeless in the center of downtown is not in the spirit of Chapter 40R, which is supposed to revitalize downtowns. This is going to de-vitalize downtown, okay? That's going to bring more people here. We now know that the more beds you build, the more will come. That our neighboring communities are already busing people here, because this is where the beds are. We have more beds per capita than any other community, the same number of beds as Lynn that has twice the population. So the more you build, the more they will come. We know that. It's not about turning our back on the homeless or the needy, it's about becoming the North Shore Haven for the homeless and all the communities, and you're missing the point if you put it in terms of beds, because it's not about beds, it's about services. You can't build a dormitory that throws the people out on the street in the morning, and you wouldn't drive a desk around at 7:00 in the morning. It's a daytime campground for all of the people who fundamentally leave that dorm room. So it's about services. The pennies that you get from the state are gonna be eaten up in spades for the services that you, as a city, are going to have to provide to those people if you have a compassionate, comprehensive view of what the homeless and the needy actually need. That simply adding beds does not solve the problem, and the rest of the burden will fall on you. So before you expand it and tell Beverly and Lynn and Laurelhead and Swamp Stock and all of those other communities that they should send their homeless here, you should consider that they should also send their services here, because those are the services you all have to provide.
You don't have to.
I'm sorry, Andrew Lippman, I live in Salem.
We're gonna take one more public comment this evening.
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth Beanbridge. I am opposed to 40R zoning. One objection, among many, is that it would allow large developments to proceed as of right, with no meaningful oversight for city boards and no citizen appeals. 40R includes general requirements, but in its application, the city has inserted requirements tailor-made for the life bridge and Harbor Light expansions, i.e. lodge or club. You're with me, I'm sorry. The result would be a massive inclusive, excuse me, massive intrusive project covering the bulk of one city block with little to no oversight, not even a design review, because the city is declining the option in the preliminary application. Harbor Light, Harbor Light's last public meeting was almost 10 months ago, and they did not allow all of the public comments to be made. Sound familiar? When will we have a question and answer session? We know plans have changed rapidly since November, even though revised plans have not been shared with the neighborhood. According, according to the undemocratic 40R process, they do not need to present to the public again. Why not? And when do residents get to present and have a discussion about the impact of the proposal? We deserve to have a conversation, to have a dialogue, especially on a proposal that will forever alter our neighborhood, our fair city. Assuming the proposal is deemed eligible, the city council would vote with a simple majority prevailing. Why is the process privileging the developer over the residents? We should all be concerned. The city is unwilling to take such liberty with our freedom, our right to choose what is best for our neighborhoods. Assuming 150 units for this expansion proposal, the city would receive $650,000 as a one-time payment for a city with an annual budget of over $200 million? $650,000 is chump change. Only developers in cities that want to skirt public comment benefit from the 40R. How is that good for Salem's residents? Thank you.
So again, I wanna say thank you to everybody who came out this evening, and I wanna echo a statement that was made by one of the individuals who tried to comment, which is, even if you provide a comment verbally this evening, put your comment in writing, submit it in writing so that it can be attached to the application. We're gonna have the application, the comment period for written comments open through the end of the day, August 15th, which is 7:00 PM on that date, and there is no time limit on, or limit on written public comments, so you can feel free to make it as extensive as you feel necessary. There will be updates about this process at macintyre.salem.org, as well as the draft application, other materials about the 40R process in general. If you have questions about the shelter and the supportive housing project, contact information is there for you in the transfer from Harbor Light Homes. Again, from the previous slide, if you have questions about the zoning process, please reach out to Elena from the Planning Department. I'm gonna stick around for a few minutes. They need to lock the building up because our workers have been here for an extended day, but I'm gonna remain as long as I can if you'd like to come and speak with me. I'm not gonna ask any of the city staff to do that, because they've already gone above the beyond for this evening, so please make sure you keep your belongings with you, and again, thank you for coming out this evening.